Welcome, everybody. It is Tuesday, February 13th. Seven o'clock. We are having a meeting of the Lee School Committee in the Lee Middle and High School Library. We're continuing to be in a virtual meeting room for Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open law, John Law C thirty A, section twenty. This meeting will take place in a hybrid fashion, both virtually via Zoom or in person for those committee members and attendees choosing to access. I would like to call this meeting to order pursuant to master law C thirty A, section twenty. I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. And next up is our pledge of allegiance and is being led by Riley Filio and Amaya.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of which it stands, my nation, under God, in the book with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for coming. All right. The mission statement of Lee Public Schools is to ensure students have the opportunities to develop social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, could you do both?
Mr. Robin?
Yeah.
Ms. Cooper?
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Lingua?
Yeah.
Harmon?
There.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Yeah.
All right. Next up, we have approval of the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three Lee School Committee meeting.
I motion to approve the Lee School Committee meeting December two.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lingua?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strick?
Yeah.
Okay. Next up, the public.
The leaders of we are invited to address the committee regarding items on this meeting's agenda at this time. The issue raised will only refer to the administration or a subcommittee of the school. I'm Julie.
All right. All right. Next up, we have a student representation from our LES drama club.
Welcome, guys. I'm excited. Uh, we every Tuesday move off some sixty four elementary school kids into the drama program. Grace and I. Um, so in summer, we decided at the time, which we decided, and she brought me into it. Um, and we have this amazing turnout. We have fifty-two first and sixth graders. They come every Tuesday. Um, and on April fifth, they will be putting on a play for you guys. They will be doing, okay, but. So we wanted to show you what they're learning. So through games and other things, they've learned to express themselves. They've learned about talking, probably speaking. And so I'm sorry, this is interactive. You're gonna have to get up. So they want to show me one of the games that they play. But all right. So you can stand up. You're gonna hurt her off. Come here. I'm asking you to help me with my hand area. Um, Mr. Martin, we did pick a partner for you. Come on down here, Hannah. If you don't have a partner with a child, you're going to partner with an adult. This is marriage. Hannah, can you go around? Is Jordan ready? I'm sending Hannah your way. Come here, Wesley. Here we go.
Mr. Brigenti, what did you get?
Mr. Brigenti, this is Wesley.
Hey, Wesley.
Come on in. All right. Come on, Riley.
Ms. Cooper is waiting for Mr. Robin.
All right. So this game is called, and if you're out and you wanna play, go ahead. You can stand up and find a partner. Um, it's called Fork and Knife. So basically, you have to work as a team, and you have to choose who can be a fork and who's gonna be the knife. So go. Who's gonna be fork and who's gonna be knife? Got it?
Yeah.
Don't show me your knife. There we go. All right. The next one. One of you has to be a teacup and somebody has to be the teapot. It's right. You have to put tea into the teapot. And our very last one, and this is their favorite. So here it is. Somebody has to be a chicken and somebody has to be an egg.
If I could ask the school committee members and the students who are participating, we'll grab a photo.
Come on in.
Hand advisors, Rachel and.
Yeah. Just there.
Everybody in.
On three, teacup. One, two, three.
Teacup.
There we go. Thank you. Greg, the bar's just been raised.
All right. Thank you so much for coming to present to us. That was amazing. I, again, I'm, you know, my kids went through that program, so I'm thrilled to back up and action again. All right. Annie, are you ready?
Oh, yeah.
All right, let's go.
Um, so the students are getting very excited as the winter break approaches. And before we head into the break, there's a few things that I'd like to cover. Um, as the last school committee meeting was canceled. And so I'll cover some topics from this month and the last. Um, and last month's activities are somewhat similar to this month's report, except for some new fundraisers. So, um, in January, as we returned from the holiday break, students are also, you know, getting very excited about the end of the semester and the start of the second half of the school year. And there was an excellent and smooth transition into the no phone policy, although some, you know, it was a bit rough for some students, but the majority were fine. Um, and some club activities where the African government was, um, and is still actively working on the love to learn or the intercession day. And the GSA has been actively planning for middle school outreach, and this outreach is gonna be between March fourth and eighth. Um, Social Justice Club, um, is also actively planning for, uh, school activity. And it's, I believe it's gonna be high school only. And it's gonna be working with the Women's Right Project, and it's going to be set on March. But we have not found a date yet. Uh, the Robotist Club has finally received their funds and, but it's a little too late. So we decided to withdraw, uh, from the competition and postpone it till next year and find some tools to use, uh, for this year. And we did borrow a lot of, uh, part from Lennox, so we have to thank them for that and get credits. Uh, the Spring Musical casted their show and their cast, the, and the show was the Mean Girls. And they're actively rehearsing every single day and sometimes in the weekends for set building. The seniors also had a class meeting and put it their past trip preferably on the twenty-second. Um, and prom is going to be on the twenty-fourth, so it gives a little break for them. And the destination that the senior class has voted upon is going to be at Boston. And for fundraisers, uh, the bowling team did a crispy donut fundraiser, and it was a huge, you know, a huge sell. And then, uh, I believe they're bringing it in this week for, um, for the people who bought it. Uh, for this month, uh, there was the mega band concert, and it went very well. Um, I believe a lot of you were there to see it. And then we received a lot of great comments. And as a performer myself, I, you know, I've gotten a lot of feedback about the improvement. And then, um, we were delighted as the high school band to be playing with the younger classmen and elementary students showcasing the players' improvement and hard work throughout. Um, and then the junior and the senior classes also had a job child day on a Tuesday, which most went on Friday, February second, and where they could enter at any place related to their funeral and gain insight into their future before them. And, uh, we had to write a thank you card or a note to the place that we interned, you know, which, you know, I personally done it, and it's very good, and I love them. Uh, and then the school also had a meeting for class scheduling, um, this past week, I believe, uh, for next school year. I'm hoping to release the schedule earlier this year because we did, um, have a lot of study on it groups, uh, last year. Um, and so I've heard a lot of positive feedback about this change, uh, because it's more efficient, I guess, for the students. And so for fundraisers, uh, the sophomore class is doing a dodgeball tournament, which is posted around the school and which you probably could see. And we invite you to join the competition. And this tournament is going to be on the fifteenth of this month. Uh, the senior class is also doing a fundraiser. Uh, we're selling raffle tickets for Valentine baskets, um, and students individually are selling them. So you might have to find, um, a senior student to buy it. Uh, and the club activities are pretty much the same, except, uh, the love to learn intercession day will be taking place on the sixteenth of this. And that is basically a summary of my report, and I'm afraid of any questions.
And Randy, question three. We got a lot of great things going on.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you so much, Annie.
Thank you.
As always, you're welcome to stay, or you can still come back.
Yeah, I, um, I will be actually staying for the two days.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have our student achievement award from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Larmen. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Student Achievement Award is in its second year of being given out to students. The award program seeks to highlight student achievement and support the trajectory of high achieving students from traditionally underrepresented populations. Those students scored in the exceeding expectations level of their two thousand and twenty-two ELA or Math MCAS tests. At this point, uh, with that quick intro, I'm gonna turn it over to Principals Mertnuck and Brigenti so that they may recognize the individual students from their schools who are receiving the Student Achievement Award through DESI.
We had six students at LES who earned this award, and I'm super proud of all of them. We have four of them here today. Uh, the first student that I'd like to recognize is Peyton Diskowitz. Come on up, Peyton.
Well, I don't want to spoil the fun. If I could really quickly, that, uh, we didn't open these, uh, but historically, uh, there's a certificate in there as well as, uh, something of value. Uh, generally, it has been a gift card, uh, to a, uh, store TBD, uh, but it's, I think it's in there. So just be excited to open that up.
Next student that I'd want to represent is Emmy Diskowitz. The next student that I'd like to honor here is Jaya Golda. Come on up, Jaya. And the next person I'd like to honor is Joshua Brazee. Come on up. Although they're not here, I would like to give them a huge shout out. We have Jimmy Kant and Liam Van Ooyt, also on recording.
We had a total of eight from LMHS who received their rewards tonight. I'm not sure how many you do. Find out. How do I win? And he put a snow down. He ain't mad commander. We didn't hold any of them. Annie Pan. And Lilian Reynolds. And Madison Kerzigman.
Thank you both. All right. Next up, we have MASSS awards.
The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents designed an award for academic excellence. These awards are given to high school seniors who have distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. This year's recipient from LMHS is Alan Nie. Alan is a senior at Lee Middle and High School, and he's the son of Kong Liang Nie and, uh, Wen Hui Jiang Zhen. Uh, last year, he received the Clarkson University Achievement Award and the Harvard University Prize Book Award. He's a member of the National Honor Society, Student Government, Gender Sexuality Alliance, Quiz Team, Social Justice Club, Let's Talk, and he's also a house leader for the Bobcats. He's also the drum major for our high school marching band and plays varsity tennis. In addition to all of this, he finds time to help his parents at their family-run restaurant. Congratulations to Alan Nie.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we're gonna take a brief recess. Um, I'll entertain a motion for a brief recess to allow our reward recipients and their families to enjoy snacks and breakfast that were prepared by our late school students at Alan Nie's desk.
Motion for a brief recess. That's it.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us in the recess?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Lingua?
Yes.
The Harmon?
Yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strick?
Yeah.
Recording.
All right. We are back. We are reopening the meeting. With, uh, Abby Richard, who's gonna talk to us about the LES lending library proposal. Don't be nervous. You're gonna do great.
All right, Abby, you're muted, so unmute yourself and to the committee about your proposal, please.
Um, a Girl Scout Gold Award is the highest achieving project you can achieve, and it's, um, for high schoolers. It's supposed to be a community-based project where you provide some type of, um, project that's self-sustaining and that can improve the community. So I was seeking the Lee Schools Committee approval to complete this school project on school grounds, which would be a lending library. Um, I'd be collaborating with Principal Mertnuck, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Heath to build the library. Um, that would be stationed outside of LES. Um, for fundraising, all fundraising would be, um, through Girl Scout approved, such as girl, um, cookies, or, um, I previously done a wrapping fundraiser. Um, it also could be through solicitations through the community companies and organizations. I'd also be looking through community solicitation to raise awareness for the library and to solicit book, um, donations. Um, and this project will not require any outside help, um, after the project, um, after the lending library is built, um, as people can take the books as they please.
Abby, will it be like used and new books? So like, can people donate used books as well, or you want all the books to start?
Nope. It can be any used books from their house. If they're looking to donate some bucks, this would be a perfect spot for them.
I'm thrilled.
The, Abby, if I could speak really quickly, uh, the vision, uh, because I know she probably won't talk about this, but she met, she did speak with, uh, Principal Mertnuck. Uh, they decided on a space in front of the building where it would, um, be in sight of people coming and going, drop off, pickup, uh, entering and exiting the building. Uh, and it would be, um, located, I think you said, to the left, uh, to the left side of, of, uh, of the doors, um, is the plan, if approved by the committee.
Abby, who is in charge, like, once, once it's built and the books are coming and going, just to kind of detain them or any of that kind of thing? Who does that responsible or involved?
Um, so I would be going up every so often, but hopefully this would be a completely self-sustaining project. So I would require, um, and hopefully make sure that that would not be needed.
I think the question might be if it, if it's painted and it needs to be repainted to be maintained, is that something, Abby, that you would maintain responsibility for? Or is the expectation that the school department, uh, would, uh, would take that responsibility on?
Um, I would take responsibility on that, but also if any future, uh, projects, I know some schools have clubs that can maintain this stuff. They could always pick it up after I do.
This is an immediate decision. I'd make a motion, uh, to approve the, uh, lending library presented by this Abby.
I'll second. Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lingua?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
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 Hi.
Thank you.
My experience, one, one gets it up. It sparks other people to put food on the run to children and set them on. I think you might be starting a trend, really. So thank you, Abby.
Thank you.
All right, Abby. Good luck.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Next up, we have our superintendent's update.
All right. Let me, uh, in here and. Thank you. I, I, what I heard from Abby was dad'll paint it. Uh, that, that was, if you, if you're good at reading facial expressions. Uh, anyhow, uh, you know, we talked about the, uh, the huge snowstorm that, uh, may have impacted some attendance tonight, but I just wanted to go on record and note we are still snow day less, uh, through February thirteenth. So our last day of school still as of today is Monday, June tenth. Uh, thank you for everyone's patience, uh, in delaying the, the call being made until this morning. Um, I know some, there's a lot of push, uh, to get that call made as early as possible, and I respect that and appreciate that. But I think it was worth the wait, uh, this morning to make sure we got the day in without question. Uh, enrollment status as of February first, uh, you'll see that we continue to, uh, been, oh, uh, just a little bit. Uh, here, we do have, uh, still some, some grades in the, in the high thirties and low forties, uh, that we are concerned about and continue to be concerned about. But we'll address that a little bit later, uh, with an agenda item, uh, under new business. Chronic absenteeism, uh, this is a recurring theme. Uh, you know this, uh, but they, DESI had been, uh, trying to have chronic absenteeism hold greater weight uh, in the accountability system. That vote failed at the Board of Ed meeting, uh, back in January. But now that doesn't mean it's not a priority for us, uh, here in the Lee Public Schools. Uh, I know that, um, I, I regularly, well, sort of semi-regularly here from, uh, Ms. Polari, uh, on about, uh, the, the constant reminders in, in my newsletters about the importance of being here, uh, in, in attendance each and every day. So, uh, for those families, uh, who are watching this from the outside, please be reminded, it is really important. It is more than seat time. It's, it's, it's direct contact time with, uh, with students to make sure that they're getting the best educational opportunities possible. Um, a couple of meetings ago, uh, we talked about, um, surveying that was done, uh, last year and replicated again, uh, this year. And, um, I gave, uh, school committee members access to the, to those survey data. Uh, but I asked for some time for my team to, um, analyze those data before talking about it. But, um, tonight's the night when I'm gonna share with you some of the general findings, uh, from, from those data. Those data were collected from staff and students. This did not, uh, this did not go out, uh, to family members. So this is really about those people who spend a good part of their day, a hundred and eighty days a year, uh, in buildings. Uh, this is a general, um, overview of what is in, uh, what is in the survey. You see that there are five, um, overarching categories, teachers and leadership, school culture, resources, perceptions of learning and community well-being. And what you'll notice is that, uh, the closer the, um, circles are to being fully closed with a check mark, uh, the better off we're doing. Some of those places where there is, um, little, uh, support positivity, positivity, and I'm looking at perceptions of learning here that I'm highlighting with my cursor or, uh, or leadership. Uh, those are areas in need of improvement, or at least maybe some additional attention. But I'm gonna, a little bit of a caveat there because, uh, the folks who are responsible for putting this survey together have shared some feedback that they've gotten from across the state that tempers a little bit of a knee-jerk reaction to some of these things. And I'll talk about that in just a moment. Uh, I wanna go backwards. So this is, um, the, that same analysis, uh, for the middle and high school. Uh, you'll see that the, uh, perceptions of work ethic are outstanding. Uh, again, the check mark means that's, uh, that's really getting positive results. Uh, that student commitment to learning, uh, maybe not so much. Um, and, uh, there's some various factors that go in. And again, I, I will, right now, say to the committee members that if you wanna dig deep, you can click on these things in that, those links that I gave you. You could find out what the questions that were asked of students and staff were, uh, in most instances. Sometimes if the, um, if the number of individuals is too small who responded, uh, you're not able to access all the data. Uh, but if the ask is made, I can reach out to the folks at ECP, uh, the Educational Commonwealth Project to, to give us that information. Student-to-student relationships, uh, are a focus, uh, for us for sure, and, and it's an interesting to note here. When you see here the questions, again, the student survey and the teacher survey, we're, we're, we're pushing, uh, growth. So this is positive, uh, in my reflection of this. Uh, but if you'll notice, you know, how often are students bullied at school or online? How often are students bullied because of who they are? How unkind are students to each other? So there's some interesting questions asked of teachers about their perceptions of students. And when you look at the student questions, again, uh, similar, uh, similar, same questions. And then the, the response rate is virtually same. So the news is teachers and students are seeing the same thing. Uh, we do wanna try to get that, um, that mark, the right side of, of, of this, uh, mark of, of denotation here. Grade six, uh, is admittedly an area of concern. Uh, we've gotta figure out what is, what is going on. You'll notice that outside of grade one, uh, at LES, grades two through six are all showing, uh, areas of growth in the, in the form of, we need to get this, we need to be better. In the in the form of, we need to get this, we need to be better at what we're doing, uh, but grade six is substantially lower. I I've got my own ideas about why that could be, some of it is you've got middle school age students in an elementary school, and that could. Uh, factor into that a little bit, when we look back historically, grade six is seeing uh similar results. Uh, over the last two years, uh, so we need to examine a little bit, uh, the reasons for the negative response. Judgment free zone here, right, we want to take these at face value, accept them and figure out ways that we can. Uh, demonstrate improvement as we move forward, I'm not here today to tell you that we've come up with a solution to this. Uh, but that we've identified this through the data that there's some room for growth, and we want to take advantage of that. Same thing here when we talk about engagement in school, you see grades one, two and three, those are positive, four, five and six. Uh, those are on the decline, some of that could be attributed to the natural excitement. Um, the younger students are when they're when they're in school, uh, that does tend to wane a bit. But this is uh, this is still something that we want to make sure we're watching and and keeping an eye on, there's a reason why, bless you. There's a reason why we talked about trying to survey students at the beginning of the year and again later in the year so that we can see, has there been improvement? Um, in perceptions uh by those people who are in front of classrooms and those students who are sitting in those classrooms. Again, academic challenge, um, grade six, again, it's it's a negative response rate, whereas grades one through five. Are at least in the approval approval side. Um, same continues to happen here, and so this isn't, this is not a judgment again on the students in grade six. The staff working in grade six, uh, it but it is, there is something that we need to address, you'll know in the district improvement plan. Uh, sort of long range, the idea of getting sixth grade into LMHS, this may be. Uh, something that helps us to force that issue a little bit, uh, it's not an easy issue to solve, we all know that. Uh, but perhaps the environment uh for students who are eleven and twelve years old uh might be. Better served uh in a middle school environment. Um, so there's lots of positives under community and and well being, uh, and. What's noted here is this level of determination, perseverance and and growth mindset at LES, uh, so. Students want to be successful, they're willing to work hard to do that, they've got a growth mindset uh as. Uh, determined by the student survey, so those results are are what the students are saying about their experiences. Take this as very positive, something we need to embrace, support and continue to uh sort of hold on, take advantage of uh each year. LMHS, it's similar in the same thing, so again. Determination, perseverance and growth mindset, I I'd like to think that um this part of this is about the excellence expected every day. That students really feel like I need to uh go a little bit harder, push a little bit further to be to be successful, but again, this is students perceptions. And I'm very pleased to see that they feel that about themselves and about those uh faculty who are working with them. Oh, emotional safety, uh, this is, this is at LMHS, uh, but you'll see there's, uh, this is. Concerning, um, this is not about their uh physical safety, this is about their emotional safety. I think that these are holdovers from COVID, I think that these are uh. Holdovers or carryovers or implications that are caused by um engagement with social media. I'm hoping perhaps that uh the lack of of the presence of cell phones or use of cell phones during the school day. Can lead to some a positive turn on some of these things where students aren't concerned with. What's being said about me or a peer, or what am I writing about a peer? Or whatever during the school day, instead, we can focus on what's important while I'm in the building. We'll have to see, but uh I I as I my note here is uh the the need for the adjustment counselor presence. I I see this as as telling, uh, this is uh, this is students. Saying that they they lack emotional safety and they need uh they need supports in place. Did I lose this, I missed, I might have lost a slide, I apologize, um. Leadership piece that you'll notice was only about half marked about halfway, um, so that circle was about half yellow, half white. Uh, I I spoke to uh Peter Piazza, who's unable to join us tonight, but his colleague Julie Spencer Robinson. Is on the call uh tonight, but I asked him about that, and he did indicate that there's a downward trend over the last few years. Uh, across the state in the districts that are being, that are conducting this survey, so the questions that were asked. About that are here, how excited are you about going to this class? How interested are you in this class, and how often do you get so focused on class activities that you lose track of time? When I read those questions, I can understand why a student. May not necessarily answer in 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 the positive, I you know, but that's not a. Yeah, the last one, it's not a judgment on uh on the survey, but I think it's a just a natural reaction. To the way the question is phrased and how it might be answered, I do note, again, relationships do take time to forge. Uh, those of you who are at convocation this year heard me talk about relationship building and the importance of that. Uh, this survey was administered in November, it will be administered again uh later in the year. Uh, so hopefully that second administration shows us some more positives that will come out of this. Uh, as a result of relationships being built and students feeling safer uh in their own skins and in their own and the classrooms that they. Uh, in which they meet. Here's uh LES, some LES data about student teacher relationships and students sense of belonging, again, this is student. Feedback for both uh for the question on the left on student teacher, and it's teacher feedback for the question on the right about sense of belonging. I don't need to read those questions to you, but again, strong relationships and sense of belonging are are in the positive uh at LES based on these data. And toggling back to LMHS, um, students feel like their teachers are helpful, uh, I boil it down to its simplest format. Um, they students are feeling like they are engaged in effective practices in classrooms, uh, and and. Teachers are feeling like students uh are able to conduct themselves and 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 do well. Uh, and give the get the extra help need in order to be successful. So I will. Well, I'll get through this real quick and then I'll I'll pause, uh, real quick, Student Opportunity Act, at the March, at our March meeting. Uh, I will be presenting the committee with um our new three year plan on the Student Opportunity Act. That is a legislative requirement uh for very little money uh for the Lee Public Schools. Um, and it's so we have to do it, it's part of it, the the Student Opportunity Act monies come in as part of chapter seventy. Uh, it's not separate funding, but we do have to have a plan for how those additional uh monies will be spent. Uh, it's only about thirty thousand dollars. And I laugh out loud and to myself when I read Desi's exemplars. For a Student Opportunity Act three year plan, and their exemplars are for a district that are pulling in millions. Uh, of dollars in in Student Opportunity Act monies, we we will do the best that we can, but the focus from twenty twenty when it first came out. Uh, till now has been on early literacy, I would like to continue to continue that focus, we do need to talk about how it will. Target narrowing gaps, uh, learning achievement gaps uh for identified groups, including uh special education, English learners. Uh, and others, and generally speaking, high need students. Very quickly, uh, health and wellness update, this looked a little different uh in January, but uh the idea is the same. Uh, COVID continues to uh rear its head along with uh respiratory syncytial virus. Uh, they're on the rise, uh, and seasonal influenza is as well, be mindful. Students and families have the opportunity to to get uh tests, they will be distributed but with students, they'll be backpacked. Uh, to use that phrase, uh, from LES, LMHS, the 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 idea is it's an open door, grab them. On your way out if you wish, if families wish to access them, uh, they can come into the school uh and pick them up as well. And quick, uh, on the budget, uh, the finance subcommittee uh met at six o'clock tonight, uh, we have created a fourth plan. Um, with a five and a half percent increase over F Y twenty four, we heard from uh the town administrator. Uh, joined that meeting, gave some feedback for our consideration, uh, we will continue to work on this, but our our. Primary concern is to see what kind of feedback we'll get, uh, following the meeting with the Towns Finance Committee on February twenty eighth. Uh, following that meeting, I'll be able to give the full committee uh some uh some additional information and and drive uh. Formation of our F Y twenty five budget. It's the longest I've spoken in a while, so I'm gonna pause. Appreciate your patience.
A couple of questions on the reporting, um. But in showing some of the results, it looked like there was no information in the college review. Maybe this section, but it wasn't half filled or partially filled again?
Yeah, no, that was. It was based on, because that's based on state level data that wasn't available.
So what E C P does is, thank you very, is is they triangulate the surveys with what's publicly available on uh Desi's website. Uh, and so there's a delay in in those data being available. Uh, they gotta, they need to go back a year, and so it's um, that's the reason why that wasn't populated.
And do we have the ability to see how other schools within the boroughs or borough districts? State, how we look at another like my other one?
So I don't uh know that we've got the same ability um. As we do at the state level to sort of see who the comparison uh districts are, can I ask Julie if she could weigh in on this?
Yeah.
Julie, if you're. On, there you go, uh, did you hear the question about comparisons between?
I sure did, and um comparisons are something that um we really seek to avoid. Because we respect the individual ecosystems really of each district. Um, the E C P districts, all of their data is password protected um online. However, um, the M C I A districts, so those are eight districts uh that join together, uh. They in 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 response to M CAS as uh being a measure of student learning and school quality, they want, they wanted something that was much more holistic. Um, really, what you all are doing tonight is you're learning much more about the students' learning experience than an M CAS score can tell. Um, so they joined together to use uh the tool that your superintendent has been, I'm telling you about tonight. The uh student survey, the teacher survey, and then the Desi data, which is your superintendent said. It's not available until later in the year, but as soon as it is, we scrape their website, it'll be in court included in your dashboard. Um, so the eight districts made the decision um just a year ago to make all of their data public. So it is available on the M C I A website, so it's M C I A dot org. They're all Eastern Mass districts, a mix of um smaller suburban districts and and larger urban districts. But it's a a lot of fun to poke around um their uh their data dashboards. Um, so it's if you go to the M C I A dot org, you'll see S Q M dashboard, and um that stands for school quality measures, just click on that. You can pick whatever district you want, whatever schools you want, um, and they've all made it public. We wanted to respect, um, the E C P districts are sort of, they're uh E C P, we're disseminating the tools for E C P. Re- respect the autonomy of the E C P districts, of course, at any point that you want to make your data public. You can, and that would be welcomed for sure, um, but you're, you control access to your data right now, as I said, it's all password protected. Probably too long of an answer, more information than you bargained for.
Yeah, like many schools who are all looking at their sixth grade and the sixth grade, you know, are there any? Metrics that we can work to see if there's any trends, necessarily not a direct comparison, I guess is what I was really thinking about.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, they, their districts are especially larger districts with with. Um, let's say many elementary schools in them, um, there, it it's a, it's a point of tension within the leadership of M C I A. Which is superintendents and union presidents and school committee members. Um, about whether, you know, how healthy it is to compare one elementary school to another in a district. Um, but in terms of trends, I I I'm so impressed that your district has chosen to administer the survey both. Uh, two times, right, so a pre and a post survey, so you'll be able to see uh what changes have taken place over the course of the year. Um, you can look at the M C I A districts um who've been administering these surveys since twenty sixteen. And absolutely, all of those district leaders use the data, um, the S Q M data. And the trends they see for their schools and districts to develop their school improvement plans and their district improvement plans and any other strategic planning they do. Yeah.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
My question is, are we gonna do any kind of like focus groups with the people that have responded? Not in a positive way, so that we can get another idea from. Then if more specific, that can drive on struggling and our interventions, you know, making venture like. You know, I wrote down, we've got concerns about emotional safety, so are we gonna send out some kind of Google form or something? Feeling, why they're feeling that way, because I think that will also help our SATs drive instruction.
Yeah, so uh, that's one of the things that I wanted to do with uh with with Julie and 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 Peter. Uh, Peter Piazza is the other um. Point of contact, uh, and uh to see what suggestions they have about how to be responsive, so the dirt, the surveys. And the results that were collected are all uh anonymous, except for those identifying factors like what grade are you in? Um, so we would need to sort of take a holistic approach to it, uh, unless we drilled down and said, grade six students. Let's talk about uh these overall uh overarching responses, um. There's a part of me that would love to wait until their post survey results come in, uh, so that. We can see if there's if there's change for the positive or not. And it doesn't mean that they can't be visited afterwards, it is, the turnaround time is actually pretty quick. Uh, from the time they're administered, I mean, we we talked about this at the December meeting, and this had been administered in November, so we, they. Uh, E C P gets this uh these data input uh quickly.
One of the things that we um can do with your district, if you're interested, is conduct focus groups with students. Um, we do that in in other districts at at any point that you're ready um to do that, to dig into. That, you know, the questions that you have about the data that you're seeing, and there's no cost to districts because it's funded by the state legislature.
Particularly about emotional health, um, we also fix. You administer the signs of suicide program, which isn't just suicide, the 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 questions are many, so we do get. Um, some more additional data. Numbers reflect, you know, they they track pretty well.
Just to just a few clarified questions, um, this was the first time we we did this, right?
The first time this year, we did it once at the end of last year. No.
Okay.
It was sort of a pilot and yeah.
Second, do you have a timeline of when the second one is going to be administered, or when should we expect?
Think we've made a decision on what the uh what date it will be, but we tried it, we were hoping to get past testing. Uh, before we took any time away from from classrooms to get it done, so I would expect it to be mid to late May.
Okay, and is this something that you anticipate after this year continuing, and I only ask that. Because I'm curious about the tracking like of sixth grades, for example, you know, watching them go through and and how that changes, do you think that will continue?
Uh, it is my hope that we are able to continue to do this, um. You know, when it was first presented to me uh at a meeting. Uh, a year ago, a little over a year ago, uh, I saw value in this, um, it's balancing. What we're able to do with the data with the classroom time that is lost, it's not a ton of time, but right, but every minute, uh, every minute matters, so we're just. Uh, trying to figure it out, and um. So we thought it was important again this year to try to do a pre and a post, so that um we can check within the year. If we're seeing improvements or not.
I think it's important, just because I think we've talked a lot about M CAS, and you're saying that's not the only measure, we need another measure, and I. I think that this is important to see another measure, I would also just be curious, no answer here, I'm just throwing it out there, like. Going back to that sixth grade cohort, and it's not, because my daughter's in that class, because that's the one that was up there, um. Like, maybe in the future, thinking about doing some type of like. Like maybe in the future, thinking about doing some type of like comparison. Because historically, when we looked at our M CAS data too, sixth grade has also been the ones with kind of the lowest historical scores. And now they're the ones that are like learning and engagement and value of learning. So I I would hope that maybe the focus groups or something in order to get some, you know, more answers here. Because my last question was kind of what Andrea already said, like what do we have in place or what's our plan moving forward like this? So what now? What like what are we gonna do with that? Which sounds like we'll be working on in the future. And my last question has has been shared with staff and or students yet or no?
So the um the L E A leadership was part of sort of the early processing of of this, but it hasn't gone out. Um to staff as uh. Julie mentioned it, it's it the these data right now are password uh protected. Uh so we would just want to be cautious about what that looks like um moving forward, but um. Certainly something for us to consider. And and uh Julie uh alluded to it, but this really came out of the work of of Jack Schneider uh at U Mass. Who, again, his um position was M CAS is not uh the the be all and end all of student assessment. So let's find other ways to find out what it is that students are feeling, learning, and experiencing on a regular basis, so uh so. I I um similar to what I said to Mr. Langley when he asked um about the analysis. Is is our ability to sort of drill down, uh take the time and work with E C P to um identify findings. I worry sometimes about um. If it's not, if it's not a guided uh data analysis that uh any individual uh will glom onto something. And. Maybe it's warranted, maybe it's not. I guess I want it to just be a sort of a controlled um. Vetting uh of the of the data. So to that end, I'm not telling Greg or Tim right now that this is, this will be on a um. Uh faculty meeting agenda, but perhaps that's an opportunity for us to share with them.
If I was a sixth grade teacher, I would want to be staff.
Moving on, we have our controls and directors reports. Great newly born after school opportunities for students at L E S starting up. That includes a hip hop dance club, which is being funded by the classroom born after school grant. Uh we have Flying Cloud Girl Science Club, which is being funded through a mass cultural council council grant. And we started up intramurals for grades five and six. Uh we have twenty eight participating in the hip hop dance club. We have forty in the uh five and sixth intramurals. And you heard earlier, sixty two strong. Uh registration packets for incoming kindergartners will be available for pickup at the L E S main office starting on Monday, February twenty sixth. Kindergarten workshop to explain the registration process will be held at the elementary school on Wednesday, March thirteenth at six thirty PM in the L E S library. All of this information will also be in our newsletters that we push out worldwide on Facebook. Uh we continue to offer easy grab and go breakfast for students entering through the main lobby in the morning. We're averaging about thirty to stay. Uh this was paid for uh partially from a grant last year, working with uh Shane uh Deguero. Who helped us uh purchase the materials needed and able to get that staff. Uh I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. And I also wanted to thank again uh Brandon Sandy Dignard. Who gave a weekly donation of fresh fruit to all of our students at L E S. Uh we also have a big thank you to the Lee Quanis Club, who donated health and snacks. Uh the math learning labs uh took place uh the end of last month for grades five and six. It's K one and two will take place at the end of this month. This is a unique E D opportunity that's led to meaningful professional development all around our high quality math materials. Progress reports for quarter three will be sent home to grades three to six uh kindergartenians on February sixth week. Uh last week, L E S and L N H S combined bands for the Megavans concert that took place in the L N H S auditorium. Students in grades five to eight performed together, which was really amazing to watch. It was well attended. I'm very proud of the goal of that in our two hands. Uh as part of the updated uh sixth grade P D I S system, we're having sixth grade students uh help out in classrooms across the building. We need the kindergartners supporting uh P E classes, and that's been very well received for the students going as well as the students. Uh M CAS prep is underway. We've got some testing in early April and then May coming up. Um and I also have a school improvement plan update uh scheduled for a later time in the meeting, but if the committee would allow, I'd like to share that. Um I'll just break it down by goal. So goal one was built around uh curriculum instruction and assessment. Uh we're continuing to implement our Intermath interreading literature, which holds availability across every section of the entire grade. Uh P D opportunities were provided during the November county wide community and twenty two faculty members at M M A. Which allowed for a lot of cross grade work. Um we're also utilizing some faculty meetings for uh H M H P D work as well. And for the end of May, we have scheduled uh P D sessions for during K to six. Uh and a list of topics have been created by the faculty and that will be shared with those providers. Uh so that's our update on goal number one. Um goal number two, student learning. Uh we made some changes to the overall schedule last year um to implement interreading mental literature. And we changed how we're scheduling interventionists. Uh it allowed us an opportunity uh to add interventionists into the upper grades. Uh and specifically to do a lot of uh progress monitoring and benchmarking that hadn't been done in the past, except for those students who are on plans. Uh we continue to look at their schedule. We continue to look at that data that we're collecting through the benchmarking and through the progress monitoring. To decide where best to put our new interventionist. Uh there's been some changes made. Uh we're trying to be responsive to where the needs are most. Um and on top of the star progress monitoring and benchmarking that we've been doing. Uh in the past, we're also this year using the growth measure reports uh for MAP and E L A to help determine uh. What the most appropriate group and the level of support is for students. And we've also been sending those home, we sent those home to families in October. And we've got again sort of the end of uh January into early February. Those are goal two. Update. Uh goal three was built around wellness. Uh we're currently reviewing our current positive behavior interventions and support system in each grade. Our dean of students, Iggy McMahon, is spearheading the effort. Uh she surveyed the faculty and is creating a P D I S team of faculty members who will uh review each grade's P D I S system. As well as build uh which will build the foundation for our school-wide system. Uh the sixth grade info that I gave a minute ago, just about our sixth graders pushing into classes. Uh that's where we're looking to evolve some of this, where we can, within our grade, have these systems that haven't helped the school overall. Uh that's our goal, so we're making some progress there. Uh grades five and six participated in the life skills program uh last fall, using the bot been in mind up curriculums. Uh which was facilitated by our two school adjustment counselors, grades three and four will do that this spring. Uh and we're currently in the process of inventorying the social emotional learning supports using each grade level. Uh as well as um surveying the faculty, seeing what types of S E L uh P D and supports that they want, they want. And we're gonna try to use uh the expertise that we have within our building to try to offer some of those supports. Uh goal four is based around communication. Uh we pushed uh two L E S newsletters out each month, in October, November, December, and January so far. Those continue to be a really good way for us to push information out to the community. Um each time we we push one out, we get, you know, three to five hundred views. Uh there's been fourteen Facebook posts to L E S uh to the L E S Facebook page since September. We'll continue to push newsletters out as well as information on our platform. Growth measure reports, as I said before, were sent home to families in grades one to six in October, as well as in January and early February. Uh these will be sent home again in May when the third final growth member assessment. And then, starting in January, uh the L E S faculty has been asked to document any time that they communicate directly to a parent guardian. Uh totals for each communication method uh from that rollout in January to now are as follows. Six hundred and one emails sent directly to families, eighty three in-person meetings, fifteen phone calls, ten Zoom meetings. Twenty class dojo messages, fifty-two C cell messages, and twenty-eight other. Um so that's just kind of a snapshot into where we're at the last couple of months uh in terms of us trying to collect data. In terms of when our faculty members are looking to get the option. Uh goal five, diversity, equity, inclusion. We had Tom Burry visit us uh last fall. And he spoke about the psychological goal of school-aged children and how the immigrant experience impacts that. Uh we're looking to see if we can come back in the spring. And I'm also looking to contact the A B L to have them come to spring well, so that we can continue the important conversation that we started last year. Operating implicit bias within the classrooms. Uh in my last update for goal six, uh is about the overall schedule. Um we're about halfway through the school year. We had made a much uh number of changes last year. Uh one was we switched the order of lunch and recess. That's going very well. Some of the concerns last year were around students trying to finish their lunch quick or not, so they didn't miss a second of recess. Plus, for a little bit of transition time, they would miss some recess. So by doing that flip-flop, we found that that stress of students wanting to eat fast or skipping lunch has essentially vanished. And that they have plenty of time, which is great. And they're getting their full recess and even a few minutes uh more in some cases. So that's working really well. Uh we also switched specials so that the older students had specials in the morning. Because they're more able to adapt in the afternoon for academic blocks versus the young ones who, you know, you have, you ask a second grader to do math at two thirty in the afternoon. They're half asleep. So we have them in their specials in the afternoon, uh and that's been working up very well as well. And we received some good feedback from the teams about how that's going. Uh looking ahead to next year, uh we're looking to uh have more flexibility when scheduling our intervention groups. And I think one of the ways to do that is to schedule R T I blocks at each grade level at the beginning of the year. You know, we just have a a block set of time that doesn't overlap within um other grades. We wanted to do that this year, but we had done so much, we didn't want to overdo it. So that's the goal for next year, and that's going to help us continue to get those interventions pushed into whatever grade level we need. I'm gonna allow that flex to. That was a lot, I know, but that was kind of the snapshot into where we're at in terms of uh the school.
I have one question. Um I love all the data that you have about communication.
Yeah.
Are we making sure that it's not just two or three of those people doing it? Like are we keeping an eye on making sure that it's happening on the board?
So I have individual teacher documents that I don't have. And I just um put all of that.
Anybody else?
I was I wasn't asking for that here. I was just wondering if you as the as the building administrator, look at that breakdown by grade level.
So every individual teacher has a doc.
Okay, good. Um last question, I was just wondering, the first, thank you, that was really cool.
Yeah.
Um appreciate it a lot. Um when you talked about adding interventionists in the upper grades, where did you add, where did you find your area of need was?
So our area of need, we we pushed an interventionist into uh math classes. That's the first time that we've added interventionist in math class for a while. That's in fifth grade. Uh now that we're halfway through the school year, we're looking to see where the needs are. Uh we've also pushed some specialists uh wherever there might have been a gap in the schedule or wherever they were available into sixth grade. Um so that there's an extra person there to help during those times. Uh are you asking like where the greatest need is or?
Yeah, yeah, you answer. I I would, I guess I was curious if, you know, sixth grade was getting any additional interventionist support.
Have a specialist scheduled there. So the specialist, yeah, it's our library, extra person there certified. But we do have somebody there who's extra and has been there for years. Uh but yeah, we're looking to see, because we have three interventionists and there's a lot of work done in early grades with wind groups and things like that. So we're really focusing a lot of our energy on the younger grades literacy, early literacy. Um and we're trying to see where we can support those upper grades. And part of us taking a deep dive into that schedule is to, what are the roadblocks? How how what is getting in the way of us getting those interventions to the upper grades? And that's where scheduling those R T I blocks and we're looking at data, having a data team meeting, looking to find out where the greatest need is. Uh tricky part is there's need everywhere, so where you put three people um. But that's that's the kind of those are the conversations we're having. We're also sending people off the road. To see how they set their their blocks up. They come back with great ideas, they share a faculty meeting. We're trying to take what's working and others. Work in progress, but we're moving.
Been out talking, talking about the uh switching of like uh recess and lunch. Uh that that is like gangbusters. That's great. Isn't it? Last year I had kindergarten that came in that at the end of the day, rap. Uh but this year, much more tame than the day, because I think she's really on even the ones. Uh I quickly appreciate. Um I think it was a huge success.
And I'll add to that process is the faculty event being involved. Awesome. Thank you so much.
I mean, yeah, activities. There's a lot more, but up from the spring, it'll come along. And I can be the girl to the good idea. Going moving social skills. And I feel like my son's already up school for the hip hop thing. He loves it. He loves it. So I mean, it's good to hear it. It keeps my son happy. Especially after school, come home from school happy.
Thank you. Funding for that came from school council meetings that we had where we self grant funds our summer program. Reach more than just the sixty or seventy, we have seven further, and so we're a lot of this year. We've been trying to get really creative funding over the calendar. Acting from our direct conversation. Product from the school.
Alright, next up we have Greg Ferenti with.
Starting out with the um. My monthly report and then like Tim, I'll segue into the uh SIP update. Andy mentioned a lot of the things that I didn't mention, so this will be a little brief first. Book your calendars for Friday, March eighth, Saturday, March ninth, four o'clock at seven P M. And a matinee on Sunday, March tenth at two o'clock for um the spring musical that you were mentioning, Mean Girls. Uh this should be a great performance on all of those, so that's that weekend of March eighth. Um Andy mentioned the implementation of the new cell phone rule uh going well overall. We seem to be stabilizing at at a most five to six um devices per day that we're confiscating. Um so that's a vast improvement from where we were uh when we first started with people over twenty. Um and I've actually had students and staff members tell me that um the students kind of hide in my office. And you when they tell me this, but that they've actually noticed the difference already. Um and in a long time, they're able to focus on the classes um and just the dedication that they make there in class time. Teachers are making some of the same time on students, I think. That's all moving in the right direction and hopefully that show will continue as we continue through the year. Um with the start of second semester, our guidance department held the annual financial aid night for seniors and families back on January twenty second. Um the whole process of paying for college was covered, including the new classroom, there's just issues this year. Um Andy mentioned the job shadow day back on February second. I want to mention an extension from that. Um our career exploration initiatives continue and we're culminating in the career fair the Thursday prior to April vacation. When juniors will also participate in mock interviews and play tennis there. On a related note, our dean of students and our two school counselors um attended the first of the series of free workshops. And Desi's MY CAP program, um which stands for My Career and Academic Plan. Um which will enhance, further enhance what we do in the field of um career and college exploration policy. Um Andy mentioned that we've begun the scheduling and course selection process for next year and on March sixth. We will host the sixth grade students and families for our annual information night for rising seventh graders. Uh we also will visit Farmington River sixth grade classes and St. Mary's eighth grade classes as well. Um in order to make those transitions as smooth as possible. So that's it for my report. Um talking about the school improvement plan update. Um our first goal uh was focused on M CAS improvement in the areas that we um identified as. Um, our first goal was focused on MCAS improvement in the areas that we identified as Moon, including the math study. E L A, sound and high school biology. Those departments have reviewed last year's results and historical results going back further as well. Um, to identify areas to focus on this year. And teachers in those departments have developed plans for preparation on upcoming U N T S tests. Including identifying individual students who may better, um, who may benefit from additional, uh, one-on-one or small group instruction, um, as we prepare. Our second goal was around the idea of providing that additional support to high means students in order to improve their performance. Uh, while Desi's official high means list only got published this week. Um, our teachers did identify those students earlier in the year who, as I said, would benefit from additional small group or individual work. And in E L A and math, in particular, the news on R two interventionists. Um, which are funded through the Esther Grant, um, to work with those students, both individual and installed use. That's being extremely helpful. Well, number three was to further refine our grading system to ensure students reach all competencies in all courses. And bring daily relevance to defined soft skills. Um, two things going on in that area, the faculty and the parent council both reviewed and approved the plan. The phase in the requirement that in order to earn high school credit. Students must show proficiency in all course competencies, not just the overall final average. So if there are, let's take an English course, which might have competencies in the areas of reading, writing, listening and speaking. Um, for example, in order for a student in the future to pass that course and earn credit. Not only do they have to be an overall passing grade course, they also have to demonstrate proficiency in all of those areas to receive credit. So it opens up the possibility of competency recovery as opposed to full credit recovery for course. So you can really target, um, student needs a little bit more. This plan with phase in is beginning with the class of twenty twenty eighth, next year's freshman. So we wouldn't make that kind of major change for students who are already in high school. Though they would continue along with their current rules, but, um, starting with next year's freshman, the plan would be to actually follow that rule. Must pass all competencies to earn credit. Um, kind of, uh, speed. So you'll be hearing more about that in the near future, um, as we bring up that point for us. We've not yet had the time to delve into the soft skills rubric and changes we might make to that, but hopefully begin that work very soon. Our fourth and final goal, uh, this year was to continue to improve school climate by defining the long-term structure of the health system. Linking our REACH, which is R E A C H, which is. Uh, respectful, engaged, accountable, community minded and honest. Those are our behavioral expectations, uh, for the school and our quality conduct. Um, our advisory planning team has been meeting regularly and developing monthly lesson plans. Focus on each one, focus each month on one of these areas. Well, October focused on respectful, yes. Uh, November spoken on focus on engagement, et cetera, things like that. Um, so we've been highlighting one each month, we're continuing that work. We've also been looking at, um, and assessing behavioral referrals, um, to see compared to previous years within a grade level, within that cohort and also school line. To see if, um, you know, pronouncing any change or any change. Um, it's a little early to tell at this point in time. Um, you know, to draw any valid conclusions, but anecdotally you're seeing, um, some improvement in some areas in terms of the number of referrals. Um, and kind of steadiness in other areas, at least it's not blowing up, so that's a positive. Um, and we'll be, this will be ongoing, this will be all people.
I was up to comments. I feel like I have to like repeat for all about the cell phone thing. And I also as a parent appreciate. So that's something we have to learn, waiting and making this. It's a high school. We do not have a P D I S program.
Sports. It's a, it's a rewards based program. Uh, so you get, you want to catch people doing, doing good.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Um, I apologize, my font is really big to fit up in my glasses, so you probably can see it down there, but. Um, so tomorrow, uh, we have our Desi onsite for our record review for our tier focus monitoring. So I'll have two people in my office with me for the day, um, and we're all ready for that. Um, and then on Friday, they're doing some interviews with, um, the, the principal, um, superintendent, myself, a teacher and a parent. Um, so that, that'll be part of their process and, and they'll do some of that feedback when they do the report. Um, so that'll be in the coming months, but that can still be probably May by the time we get that fully completed report. Uh, we do have some staffing updates. We have tentatively hired three additional people to fill some of those open pair professional spots. Um, two of them have paperwork in process and one of them, um, has not yet started it, but we are hopeful that we can get that up and going in the next week and a half or so. Um, and that will leave us with two openings currently. We actually unfortunately lost one of our longtime teachers. Um, she took a position in her home district where she has kind of had a goal to be. Um, and we do have a little bit of changes going on at the elementary school where one of our teachers in fifth and sixth grade. Was moving into the kindergartens to a second grade special education teacher position. Um, we do have the fifth and sixth grade position posted. Um, and we've started doing some interviewing, so we're hopeful to have, um, some staffing solutions in the very near future for the report. Um, and then I do still have an eleventh and twelfth grade, um, paraprofessional position open here at the middle and high school. I have gotten two new applicants this week, so those will be set up for probably next week. They'll be in, um, for a little bit, so it'll be easier to do that when the one that's around. Um, and I've also still plugging to get, um, substitutes for both teachers and paraprofessionals. That's not just for special education. It is for both buildings. Um, I know the secretaries, um, at both the middle high school. And the elementary school would be thankful to have a few more people that they could call. Um, and we've actually got a few people, um, who have recently applied to be subs. That's great news. Um, our big news right now in special education is our preschool screenings. We, that is a team a couple of weeks ago. Um, Mr. Mertnik and I, and we included St Mary's in that as well, because we helped them do their kindergarten screenings. Um, we've ordered, ordered all of the materials for the screenings. And any child that's going to be either three or four by October first, two thousand twenty-four. Um, we do screens for three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and then kindergarten screens for five-year-olds. Um, but the three and four-year-olds, um, will be Tuesday, April twenty-third, Thursday, April twenty-fifth, and Friday, April twenty-sixth. Between, uh, nine and two, they can call the special education office and set up an appointment. Um, they range anywhere from thirty to forty-five minutes for an appointment. And it's, uh, we use a, um, universal screener. Plus we also have some screens that if we see some issues in speech and language and we do a little bit more in depth in that area or stroke, motor, fine motor skills. Um, if for some reason those gates don't work for you, please reach out to my office. We will have some additional dates later in May. We want to make sure that we get all of those families, um, set up and have those students, um, screened. As of right now, there are going to be ten spots for the three-year-old program for next year. And twelve spots for the four-year-old program. Six of those spots for the four-year-old program are already filled. With our three-year-olds going up into the four-year-old program. And we have twelve four-year-olds going into kindergarten, so it would be part of that kindergarten registration process this year. Um, if your child currently receives services from early intervention, so P D C or if your pediatrician. Has recommended any kind of services for speech or O T or P T. Um, we really strongly recommend that you reach out to my office if your child be three at any point between now. Um, and really October, um, first. Um, and we will get a transition meeting set up as soon as possible. And if you don't currently have early intervention services, but you suspect that you have a child that might need some of those, those services. Please call my office and we can help with that as well. And that is all I have. Thank you.
I just want, first, when you say ten and twelve spot, are those for fear models or for both?
It's for both. Okay. Yes.
Oh, six. All right. We have a facility to.
I'll give the very quick, uh, thank you. So, um. While I'm not going to get into details on what, uh, Jordan would normally present, uh, the committee, uh, does need to know that, uh, Jordan has, uh, offered a letter of resignation. Uh, he will, uh, wrap out the next, basically finish the month, um, through March first. He'll be with the district. Uh, he's, uh, taken in, uh, an opportunity that, uh, he thinks is the right move for him. And as I tell all of my staff, uh, I'm not here to get in the way of you following, uh, what, what's important to you. Uh, so, uh, so Jordan would have been here tonight. Um, I don't think I'm oversharing, but, uh, you also know Jordan's a volunteer fire, fireman with Lennox. And, uh, his, um, fire truck last night was involved in a motor vehicle accident. And so he is, uh, home recovering, uh, from that. We expect to see him, uh, if not tomorrow, uh, then Thursday, he'll be back. So I know that, uh, I'm working with Jordan to, uh, have a plan for as smooth the transition as possible. Uh, with the hope, uh, that we can find a replacement for him quickly. Um, if, if not, we will, um, we will make it work. We'll figure it out because that's what we do. Um, but I, I do want to publicly thank Jordan for, uh, his years of service and all that he's done. Um, for the public schools while with us. Um, so, uh, outside of that, uh, I did have a, uh, meeting with some interested parents about, uh, the, our playground facilities. Uh, and at L E S, uh, and I'm working with, uh, Chris Britton and D P W, um, to hopefully make some, um. Improvements to that in the not too distant future.
Cancel on that, be great. Um, okay, next up we have committee reports. Our first committee will be our policy.
We met on February sixth, uh, fourth, using policies from A F C and updates on the policies. And we look at the first one, the A school community operational goals. The only, uh, edit that we did was we just explained what SMART was on number four. We did our first reading and was approved by the subcommittee.
Okay, I will make a motion to waive the second reading.
I make a motion to approve policy B B school free operational rules and to waive secondary.
I second. Any discussion? Brenda, can we roll call? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Schermer? Yes. Mr. Langwell?
Yes.
Ms. Ronnie?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Yeah.
Then we worked out the next, uh, policy committee legal status, sorry, file B B school committee legal status. We learned, uh, a name I want to, uh, point out is go where staff by law got footnote there. Where it says two, it has a corney there, but it should be a parentheses there for two or three years. School committee member for five. That fits what you know that, but it's bad. And we did our first reading on this and it was approved by the subcommittee.
I make a motion to approve policy B B school committee status and to waive secondary.
Andy, just that one. I'm going to be trying to brand your voice and I'm going to give the roll call because not sharing the voice is not fair. Aaron.
Yes.
Eddie Cooper?
Yes.
Nicole, prepare it.
Yes.
Fred Langwell?
Yes.
Me, yes. Kurt Nichols?
Yes.
Betsy Strickler?
Yes.
All right, moving on to our, uh, third one here is file B B A A school committee member authority. We did our first reading of committee meeting and it was approved by the committee.
Make a motion to approve policy B B A A school committee member for and waive secondary.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Langwell, I'm sorry. Henry Alarmen, yes. Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler, yes.
All right, moving on to our final one that we will, our second and final one is file of B B A. B B B B school committee member qualification slash open of office. This was first read by the subcommittee and was approved by the subcommittee.
Make a motion to approve, uh, policy B B B A slash B B B B. School committee member qualification slash open box and to waive secondary.
I second. Any discussion? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. DePerrit?
Yes.
Mr. Langwell?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
And the last policy that we reviewed and, uh, was, uh, file B B B C. School committee member resignation. This, we did our first meeting and it was approved by the subcommittee.
Make a motion to approve policy B B B C school committee member resignation and to waive secondary.
I second.
Any discussion? Ms. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. DePerrit?
Yes.
Ms. Langwell?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
And I would like to thank the subcommittee for meeting on that night.
All right, next up we have warrants.
We've met, uh, in the last three, we've met three different times, including this evening, um, and we've mostly budgeted conversation. However, uh, this is part of the training meeting, of those three meetings, uh, were our warrants. So Mr. Jezzer, please, uh, count pay.
For the work governing for warrants, this meeting, the total for the warrants is three hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred four dollars and thirty-seven cents. The first warrant from twelve twenty is for one hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. And our large vendors for that warrant are EverSource, Hillcrest and Sprague. For January third, the warrant totals fifty-four thousand and nineteen dollars. And the large vendors for that warrant were due for EverSource and Positive Behavior Supports. January seventeenth, the warrant totals were one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. And the large vendors for that warrant are Berkshire Gas, due for EverSource and Ballet Educational. And for January thirty-first, the warrant totals one hundred eight thousand dollars. What was it? One hundred eight thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-one cents. The large vendors for that warrant were C T C, Hillcrest, Mountain Holy Oak and Sprague.
Oh, anything open to the account pay?
I move to accept the warrant for accounts payable in three hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. DePerrit?
Yes.
Ms. Langwell?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
And the final is payroll. Ms. Stewart?
So the total for these four payroll warrants is one million, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars and fourteen cents.
Anything open?
I move to accept the payroll warrant for one million, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and four dollars. Nine minutes. Sorry, no.
Do the second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper? Ms. DePerrit?
Yes.
Mr. Langwell?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Ms. Dean.
Ms. Strickler? All right. Next up we have old business. Very good influence and challenge. So the next thing we want to do is we'd like to develop a facility supplement. We talked about this last month. All right. So I don't know if it helps for you all to know how many babies you have currently. But right now, um, airing your own three. But right now, um, Erin, you're on three. Teddy, you're on four. Nicole, you're on four. Frank, you're on five. I'm on three. Kirk is also on five. And Betsy's on four. So, is anybody interested in being, uh, being on the subcommittee, if you'd be willing to help, I guess. Improvement and. Teddy, you are on three.
She's on this call, just so they.
Alright, so um, the other thing we need to do, we have to have motion to vote it to practice two, right? To. Oh, did we do that last time? Yeah, sorry. Alright, the next thing up is our new business and it's our school choice deadline.
So uh, thank you. This, this comes from a place of. Looking to improve our standing uh in relative to enrollment. And uh, y- you know, we've talked about our enrollment challenges frequently and, and this was. Um, brought up a, a, as an admin team about is there, is there an opportunity for us to? Uh, normally we say, once a school starts, we don't accept any, any school choice applicants. You're gonna need to wait until the next year. Um, we wonder whether we're doing a bit of a disservice uh to us by doing that. Uh, there are, there are natural concerns that we have about mid-year school choice. Uh, but uh, we think that those are going to be outweighed by uh filling uh. Classes uh in, in, you know, to the best of our abilities. So what I would like to ask uh the committee to do. Um, and, and we can obviously discuss this more in April when we determine how many school choice seats I will make available, but. Uh, is to allow us moving forward into next year, uh, the flexibility to accept students. Um, maybe through December um for school choice. So if there are families that are wavering on where they may want to be. We get them before halfway through the year. Um, we can uh hopefully work some, some positives. With them and some magic. What, what we want to avoid is uh. Sort of open enrollment at any, at any point, uh, because the fear there is you get. Students who aren't meeting with, with success in a given school at a given time. Uh, and if they try to transition into Lee, uh, you know, in, in March, uh, that may not, uh, they may not be successful. So looking for us to modify our practice, uh, this isn't um in policy anywhere. Uh, that, but just our practice that we will accept school choice students, uh, I would suggest until the December break.
I make a motion uh to uh approve that request and to open, I guess, school choice application deadline. Uh, through the end of December.
Any discussion?
I would like to also consider case by case, so we're not having, you know.
You can't do that. The committee determines the number of seats that are available at each grade level. You'll do that in April of this year. Uh, and then we don't, there is no vetting process for uh.
Okay.
For an individual applicant or a grade level after those decisions have been made by the school committee.
I was just gonna say, is that standard practice of other schools or?
Uh, I, it's, that's the, that's the law. That's the law. Oh, you're talking about the December?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I, I.
Not having it be open. Or is it just like?
I think it's, it varies, um, it varies. Some people have deadlines, um, and others don't.
Do you think that there is, uh, if, let's say, uh, we said, you know, open enrollment throughout the entire academic year. You mentioned a concern about suddenly not meeting the success in the first year, so if you're trying to transition. You think that would be outweighed by the potential of a family moving into another district, say in March or February? And saying, we want our child near the area, we want our child to go to Lee and not. To our home district. Do you think that that potential could outweigh one of the other, or is it? Is it, is it, is it juice not worth the squeeze? Is it not worth the risk?
Uh, yeah, I don't know that um. That that's not an extreme outlier of a situation. Um. And if they were truly intent on wanting to be in Lee. Uh, they may purchase a home in Lee, or they may, um, you know, certainly they'd be, they'd be welcome to apply for a school choice. Slot the next year.
Right, okay, yeah. So you're, you're, you're professional. What you're saying, super Ben Richard, is seven thirty-one is.
Right.
Is there any sort of like, I'm not saying data, but I don't even know if that's it, that there has been people who have wanted to.
Yes.
And have not been able to.
Yes.
Like the signal for can't out or no?
Um, I think we had four students in September of this year who wanted to uh come here and.
Could not.
Correct.
For whatever reason, it's not a thing at home in school, and they realize that. A couple of weeks into their school year, and uh, and maybe they're finally saying, hey, Karen, for the head guard, you know, I need to change.
Right. Right.
Well, that's why I was asking, like, if you find it's at the beginning of the year, that you have like the most people who have asked and not been able to do it.
Right. And we do make it our practice to, um, if a student lives in Lee. And moves mid-year, we allow them to remain uh as a school choice student through the balance of the year, and they will. If they choose to continue with that, they're able to do that.
Alright. Mr. Robin.
Yes.
Miss Cooper, yes. Miss DePere, yes. Mr. Langwell. Ms. Larmine, yes. Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Strickler, yes. Alright. Uh, next thing on the agenda is when our next school meeting is, and that is March twelfth, twenty-four. The last thing on the agenda is um, and I told the most preferred agenda. I move to attorney.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, Mr. Robin.
Yes.
Miss Cooper, yes. Miss DePere.
Yes.
Mr. Langwell.
Yes.
Ms. Larmine, yes. Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Strickler. Thank you, according to date forty-five.